Okay, you should be ready to go.
Okay, thanks. Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. It's Monday, March 28, 2022, 7:00 PM. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at So our first item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a proposed warrant article to add a section to Chapter 153 Trees for a Tree Bylaw. We'll ask the planning assistant to read the public hearing notice. Colleen?
I'll do that. The Town of Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM via remote Zoom meeting to review a proposed general bylaw amendment or annual town meeting warrant article to add a section to Chapter 153 Trees for a Tree Bylaw. The intent of the bylaw is to put in place process for maintenance of public shade trees, including but not limited to trimming, cutting, planting, and the removal of dangerous or damaged trees within the public right-of-way and to protect the town from unnecessary tree removal and to maintain the New England character and charm of the town of Southborough.
Very good. Thank you. So this is the beginning of the public hearing for this warrant article for the Springtown meeting. We'll ask, turn it over to Mrs. Luttrell.
I have a little PowerPoint which I'm embarrassed to even show after seeing Marnie's artistic creation that she did for Arma. But here goes. So there are many reasons to protect public shade trees, and one of them is aesthetics. So this slide just shows a road with no public shade trees next to a road with public shade trees. And the next slide. Massachusetts has a long history of protecting public shade trees. The first state law was that addressed this was in 1896. It was followed in 1899 by a law that required all towns and cities to have a tree warden, which is currently in effect. And today we have Chapter 87 of the Mass General laws and Chapter 40, Section 15(c), which both govern public shade trees. And the last slide. So this proposed bylaw will closely follows Mass General law, Chapter 87, and Mass General law, Chapter 40, 15(c). And it just adds clarity as to the town's responsibility under both of these Mass General laws. And it creates a process for the town to follow and hopefully will prevent public shade trees from being removed without the public knowledge. Will provide more transparency in that process. What this proposed bylaw does not do is infringe on personal property rights. The bylaw only affects public shade trees, which are trees in the public right-of-way, which are currently governed under Mass General law. And it does not prevent the removal of hazardous trees that pose an imminent hazard to people or property. And it also has provisions to waive the bylaw during periods of weather emergencies. So that's my introduction.
So Colleen's going to put the eight-page draft on the screen. You can speak to that if you want, Mimi. Otherwise, we'll open it up to the board for questions and comments, and then the public.
I'm sorry, it's taking me a little bit.
So do you want me to go through it section by section, Dawn, or how do you want to?
Well, we should just go, you know, a top view, which would be, you know, just look at page one and say what, you know, page one consists of this and that, which starts with the definitions at some point, and just the A, B, C, so that people not going to have time to read the whole thing while we're on air here, but it basically covers these areas. And you can, if you want to speak to, in a few words, these different lettered areas of the draft before we open it up to the board.
Okay. The first page covers the purpose, and there are many reasons to preserve trees and public shade trees specifically is what we're talking about in this bylaw, conserving energy, reducing pollution, reducing wind speed, increasing the endurance of pavement. And then after the purpose, there are specific definitions that are referred to in the bylaw. Also, Mass General laws, which doesn't provide specific definitions. So this provides more clarity to the Mass General laws by providing definitions. And then Section C talks about the tree warden, what their duties and responsibilities are under this bylaw, which is the same as what they are under Mass General law. Has specific requirements for a tree warden, which are required in Mass General law. And then D speaks to what this bylaw applies to, which is public shade trees, which are trees in the public right-of-way.
Mimi, on this one, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It talks about the drip edge, right? You can't prune within the drip edge of it. Is that, so let's just say the tree is technically not in the public right-of-way. And it's on, say, my property. But the drip edge goes onto the public right-of-way. Is that then for a public shade tree? Or is that my tree, and I can do with it what I want?
Well, if the tree isn't in the public right-of-way, it's your tree.
And that's the center of the tree? Is that right? The trunk?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Section E discusses planting of new trees, which we haven't really done in Southborough. And then F is, provides clarity to the prohibited activities, one of which is topping of trees, which we have seen a lot of in the last few years. And if you chop the top off a tree, it kills the tree.
Imagine that.
Imagine. And then Section G gives the specifics on how to request a public shade tree removal. And then H goes into the process of a public hearing. Then Appeals. And J is the replacement of trees. If a public shade tree is removed, two public shade trees should replace it. And then K addresses emergency tree removal, where a tree presents an imminent hazard, and there's not time to hold a public hearing. The tree can be removed. And then L speaks to utility companies and requires the tree warden to request a hazard tree removal and vegetation management plan from utility companies. And it lays out the review by the town of that plan. And then M is enforcement. And is, if a part of this bylaw is declared invalid, it doesn't invalidate the whole bylaw. And then the last section is to create the tree fund, what it can be used for. And then that's that. This bylaw was taken from mostly Provincetown, Grafton, Cambridge. So there are bylaws by many other towns that have been approved by the Attorney General's office. Let's follow us along with that. Any questions for me?
Dawn, you're on mute.
Okay, thanks. And we'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
No, I asked my question as we went through. I just want to say thank you, Mimi, for putting this together. I know it took a lot of work and research, but really appreciative and think it'd be great for the town to have this clearly defined and more structured on it. So thank you. Appreciate it.
How about Marnie?
Yeah, thanks, Mimi. And I know you've gotten some support along the way. I'm happy to help on the PowerPoint slide presentation, too, because I think, having done this a few times, I think it's also helpful for us to kind of call out where we're kind of supplementing Mass General, like where we need to have additional clarity, just in the PowerPoint slides just up front. And then I know that we received some guidance or suggestions from Tim. I know he's also an attendee, so I guess we will talk about that, too, because that was circulated in our Dropbox, too, is Tim's feedback on a revolving town fund, definitions, and tree replacement. But overall, I've looked at this a couple of times, and I'm still very supportive of this and think it's the right thing that has to get put forward into our town. And my hope is that our, you know, more people will attend. I see a lot of our attendees are people that are here every time we have a meeting. So thank you for that, our fan club. But hopefully, they, too, can add or supplement if they've seen anything. But thank you again, Mimi, for really driving this forward. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for volunteering to help with the PowerPoint. I'm taking you up on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the next item on the agenda is another public hearing for scenic roads, which I'm going to talk to. And in my review of and research into the scenic roads, I'm finding that the different websites have all kinds of information for the different towns. And I believe it was a DCR website that states that there's over 100 cities and towns in Massachusetts that have a similar entry in their town code that addresses the management of the public trees in that town, over 100 towns. And right now, Mrs. Luttrell, we have a document called the Tree Policy. I don't think that's in the code. It's just a policy that the DPW and the Selectmen have agreed to try to follow. Is that?
Do we have one?
Yeah, there's a tree, there's a document called the Tree Policy. It mostly addresses planting and the different species that are recommended for different places. We did it a couple of years. Well, there was one that was done, I think, around 2000, early 2000s. And then it was updated, I think, in 2019.
Oh, the street tree guidelines?
Is that what it is? Yeah, guidelines, yeah. So that's quite different than what you're proposing. And so what you're proposing are, what do we have now?
Nothing as far as I can tell. Well, we have Mass General laws, which, Chapter 87, and Chapter 40, Section 15(c), which we're required to follow.
But as far as a town-specific code regulation on how the town should manage its trees, right now we have nothing.
Yeah.
And yet 100 other towns have something like this. So the document that we just had on the screen, is that what's going to be printed in the warrant? Or do we have time to make adjustments? Does anybody know?
I think that is time to make adjustments.
What's that? We can make adjustments before it goes to the final draft?
I think.
Or maybe we should maybe we should try to do that tonight or give general guidance to Mrs. Luttrell to make those adjustments to submit to the Selectmen for the final printing. Colleen, do you remember the date for that? Is it April 5?
It was April 5, and then I had heard that there's a little wiggle room within a day or so.
But we have another. No, we don't have another meeting between now and April 5. So that should probably be done tonight, either by the whole board or by the board giving Mrs. Luttrell the green light to make those adjustments based on what we covered tonight. Does that sound okay? So let's open it up to the public. Any questions or comments?
Alan Donia.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me ask a question. I apologize. This may have been covered, Mimi, when you were going over the highlights. I did tune in just a bit late, kind of pursuant to what Andrew was asking. If a tree is in a private land, but the drip edge is extended into public, what happens if the base of the tree itself is unfortunately split between public and private? What happens at that point? Or what would happen, I should say?
Mimi, isn't this one of the areas that you and I went over and thought that we would get that type of specific question, among others, reviewed with town council so he could properly advise us? Because I'm sure, even though the statutes are relatively silent in some of these areas, there must be case law where they dealt with this. That's my understanding of how we're going to answer some of these questions is to ask town council to advise us. But go ahead, Mimi.
Yeah. I would, yeah, I would seek town council's advice on that. I think state law, if you like share a tree with your neighbor, you share the tree. So I don't know if that applies to municipalities also.
Okay, so it seems like it'd be a case-by-case basis. You'd have to pull in someone else other than what's stated in the warrant article or in the bylaw to make a determination, if it ever gets to that.
Well, I think we would ask town council prior to town meeting for an answer to that question.
Yeah, we'll take that as a homework, homework assignment to get that question. There'll be some others before we get through tonight in areas where we think we need a little guidance.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to ask. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Tim, you're on. Did you want to speak to your email?
Well, I can. I thought the two emails were self-explanatory. But I mean, thanks for noticing. The first one seemed to find its way into the current draft in terms of, you know, how to get a tree fund set up in the scope of this article. I assume it'll stand up to review. And then Mimi and Karina got a more recent email from me with some observations about the current draft, you know, some fairly minor things that, but important that need to get fixed. I'd have to, I'd have to pull it up to get the list, but it amounted to refining the definition of a tree fund, getting the use of the first use of the fund in the proper fiscal year. And I think the third item had to do with who determines how much you have to pay if you're a lumberjack removing one of the public shade trees. That's off the top of my head, but Mimi probably has it right in front of her.
So I know the tree fund question, Karina was working with Carla on those financial questions. As far as the fines, that's part of the tree warden's responsibility to set fines. Mass General law, Chapter 87 says they can't exceed $500. But I assume that there would be more specific fines in tree warden regulations.
Yeah, I didn't bring, I didn't bring that up recently. That was, I did make a comment on that two meetings ago, I think.
I have it up, Mimi. I guess my question was just making sure, like, what you're, because I think if we're having a conversation about it, just to see if we're all aligned on things. So one of the points for the revolving fund you're looking at, he said in the main part, J, tree replacement or payment to the tree fund of an amount deemed suitable for the planting of two trees, you probably want determined by the planning board to be sufficient. You don't want the person removing to pick an amount.
Oh, okay.
I think. To end, I just didn't see, I didn't have a chance to look at the draft that Colleen just put up to just see if that was included, if you guys made any changes to the draft.
Not that I did.
I didn't see them.
And that was in Section J, tree replacement.
My comments were based on what was in the packet, and the packet at least hasn't been revised. You see, it still says 22 at the bottom for fiscal year. It should be 23. Was one of my comments. I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of public time.
Well, I think if we're rewriting it, though, Tim, I think the point is that I think that the entire planning board needs to just be aligned if we are in agreement with it.
Oh, I agree.
So that, the language was just, you probably may want something like determined by the planning board to be sufficient versus of an amount deemed suitable, the payment to the tree fund determined by the planning board.
Yeah, I found my copy. I'm sorry, I wrote the email in the order I read the article, which was from the bottom to the top. The problem with the current language is that it doesn't say who does the deeming. So if I were the lumberjack, I'd pick a number that made, that made me happy, which wouldn't necessarily be the one that made the town happy.
Good call, Tim. Yeah.
I know, Mimi, you acknowledged this email, so I'm kind of surprised. Anyway, now I'm putting in B definitions, the tree fund.
Where is it that you want to go? I'm sorry?
Definition, scroll up towards the top. Yep.
Right, what I think you want to say is something along the lines of the tree fund is a revolving fund established by Article 26 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting to be used exclusively for the purchase and planting of public shade trees and related expenses. Established by Article 26 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. And the reason for that is that this will be put verbatim into the town code. So you have to refer to it in a way that will still be there because the warrant disappears after town meeting. So that's just making it clear which fund we're talking about and that it's this one. And I think that's all I had in the second email. Hopefully.
Who was doing the typing just then?
That was me, Colleen.
Thanks, Colleen. Everyone good with that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, this wasn't intended to, you know, change what you were doing. It was just intended to make it work.
Yeah, it helped clarify. I am very thankful for you to review it. Thanks, Tim. And then, Mimi, the other. And then Mimi, the other yellow stuff, what's highlighted is that like there's a lot of highlighting it. What, what's that?
So the, um, the tree fund.
Got it. That's being clarified with finance and Karina.
No, it's 20, it's fiscal year 23.
Yeah, so gee.
Because you know, this, this is 22 and you can't, you can't have any money before that.
The other question on this was I heard from watching a joint advisory select board meeting that there was a desire to move this to a special town meeting in the fall. I don't know if the board wants to discuss that or wait to see if we get a request from the select board.
Yes, we definitely will. Is, are there any more comments relative to the text, the draft? So hearing then, um, yeah, has anyone on the, I mean, at the selectments meeting, there was brief words said about possibly bumping this article to the fall. It really didn't seem to go anywhere, but it was stated. And has anyone on the planning board heard or seen, uh, received anything relative to a request to move this article to the fall?
I have not.
Marnie?
I, I wouldn't say in an official capacity, but I was reached outreach by Kathy Cook just to have a conversation about something that she said was time sensitive and urgent. But I never got a chance to talk to her.
But I did talk to her. So she advisory wants to move this also.
But nobody, and Colleen, you have, you noticed anything to come into the office?
No, there's nothing, nothing formally requested, no.
Well, um, I'd be curious to know the reason why somebody would want this to be bumped to the fall. Unless other articles, um, non-financial fiscal year funding articles. Unless some of those are being asked to be bumped to the fall, then why would this be? So, um,
Yes, Tim knows.
Well, I, I can tell you what I heard. And it's on, it's not, none of it's my position. What I've heard are, are, are two things. One is there's a belief that this may be controversial and they want to make everything fit into the one or two day town meeting. And then there's another train of, of thought that I've heard that says this article isn't ready. But I've not heard any reason, you know, behind that other, other than just this general. It doesn't feel ready to some people. Those are the only two, only two things I've, I've heard from folks.
Well, wondering how they would know that this would be controversial and some of the other ones wouldn't be. That's the one.
I'm not agreeing with them, Don. I'm just telling you this is.
No, I, I appreciate you saying that, Tim, and I think I heard that myself in the replay. But as far as not being ready, then I would say that those who think it's not ready would invite them to go to the Northboro, Marlboro, Ashland, Hoppington, Holliston, Grafton, Upton, Framingham, Sudbury, Hudson, Whalen, Lexington, uh, town websites and look at similar documents that have been approved by those towns for the management of their public trees. Compare what, what our document is to theirs. There, there will be some differences. Some of them are a dozen pages, some of them are three pages, ours is eight pages. So, um, I think if, if somebody says that it's not ready, they'd have to be specific as to what's missing or what's, what's not, what's not coordinated or what's not, doesn't make sense. Uh, and again, go to the neighboring town websites and see what they have. And you'll see, um, very, very similar documents as to what's being proposed here in Southborough. And some of those have been on, uh, have been used as management tools by those towns for, for several years.
They, they come to the public hearings as well, right, Tom?
What's that?
They could come to the public hearings as well, right, Tom?
Oh, yeah, and explain why, uh, it's not ready. We wouldn't certainly invite that. Go ahead, Marnie.
Yeah, just a comment. I am, um, I really do believe this is ready. I, I think we heard similar things about the lighting bylaw. And I think the reality is, is we are at a stage in our town where we need to actually have some clarity specifically around our public shade trees as well as our scenic trees and have a general policy that continues to follow MGL, but also adds in some of the, clarify some of the concerns that we have because it's, it's a consistent, um, you know, process violation. And I think that the longer we delay, the longer we're going to see some of these processes being ignored. And I think that we need to put our foot down. So I'm strong advocate for, for presenting this at town meeting and not delaying it.
Okay, I looked at one other town that we've looked at, uh, and that's the town of Harvard. And they have an excellent, uh, excellent tree management, uh, on their website. Anything else, anyone else? Go ahead, Mimi.
Excuse me, just one other thing. I think as I said, I spoke with Kathy Cook and her belief that this would be controversial stemmed from her believing that this bylaw was created as a result of, um, the trees coming down at St. Mark's, which I explained to her that A, we've been working on this for three years. We initially had tried to put a process in place and then grew into creating a bylaw. And the trees that were taken down on St. Mark's weren't in the public right of way. So they, even if this bylaw was in place, it would not have any effect there.
Anything else from anyone before we entertain a motion to continue the public hearing? So our next meeting is April 11th. So if the board wants, we can continue this to that, uh, date.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We continue the public hearing for the proposed warrant article to add section, chapter, to add a section to chapter 153 trees, um, for a tree bylaw to April 11th, 2020. At 7:30.
Second.
Motion made in second. Colleen, um, we have, uh, we have two other public hearings that night. One is 325 Turnpike Road and 200 Turnpike Road. And we have three and the modification at 156 Northborough Road. Do you have the times for those, each of those?
I believe I do.
That's why I was hesitating.
Can't go, probably can't go wrong with 7:30. I would recommend we'd start, start the meeting with these, but if we already have those time slots taken by these public, these other public hearings, then we have to go afterwards.
Just one more second and I'll, I'll look for the actual agendas.
Well, Kate has them from our notes.
It's a competition.
Don't do that to me.
I saw Kate yawning. I thought I'd keep her on her toes.
Let's see. Uh, tree bylaw will be 7:15.
What do we have for 325 Turnpike?
Uh, 7:05. And then 710, 200, 710.
Is 710. 156.
Is 715.
So Mr. Mills' motion, uh, stand at 7:30?
7:20.
7:20.
7:20.
So that's your revised motion?
That's my revised motion, yes. In case someone else doesn't want to attend earlier, you make this as quickly, you know, bump this up as quickly as possible.
And do we get a second for that revised motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question.
Marnie?
Can we revise this then for everything we took? So we, because we're going to revise, so our revision will be what we just agreed to?
Yes.
Okay.
And knowing our able, uh, planning department staff, I would expect to see these revised drafts on the website tomorrow.
You got it.
Thanks.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Lee Han, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a, uh, public hearing. It's a proposed warrant article for scenic roads. We'll ask, uh, the planning assistant to read the public hearing notice.
Okay, the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May, I'm sorry, Monday, March 28th, 2022 at 7:05 PM via remote Zoom meeting to review a proposed general bylaw amendment to the annual town meeting warrant article to add chapter 154 scenic roads. The intent of the bylaw is to designate all remaining town roads not currently designated as scenic roads other than those specifically excluded by state statute as scenic roads under the provisions of MGL, chapter 40, section 15C, and to instruct the planning board in exercising responsibilities thereunder to take into consideration sound planning principles and aesthetics and preservation of natural resources as well as public safety. That's it.
Thank you. So let's get the draft article on the screen.
Do you want your PowerPoint?
That's after they, we, we see the, the draft. And that's the one that lists the 68 trees. Trees, yes, streets.
Streets. I'm fumbling through this, sorry. Can you see that? Okay. There we go. I don't know what's going on.
Seems to be a blend of two documents.
Yeah, it is. One's open and one. See if we can find it again. Want to start talking and I'll keep playing with this? I'm sorry.
So I want you to just leave that for now and you can get the idea. There's a text, this text that the, uh, at the beginning of the article is virtually identical to, uh, the text used in previous town meetings in the seventies to establish or designate, designate is the verb, uh, scenic roads in Southborough. So, uh, and then below the, the paragraph is a list of the roads that we received from the DPW or the town clerk, I forget who, uh, with the dates, the town meeting dates when those roads were accepted by town meeting as public ways. And this list, um, is, is those public roads that were accepted after 1978.
I can.
And you can see there's 68 of them. And the dates are, um, through the eighties and the nineties and the, uh, early 2000s. And just by looking at it, you can see how the town exploded with new roads and neighborhoods in the eighties and nineties and early 2000s. So, um, let's go to, oh, there you go. So can you, uh, put that down and be able to retrieve it? Uh, and let's go to the, um, the PowerPoint.
So I don't think I have the PowerPoint. Is it in Dropbox?
Um, no, I just gave it to.
Okay.
You can all see that?
I'll, I'll help yours too, Don.
So there's seven slides here that I put together to talk to this article. And it's the verb for this is designate designation. So the, the, um, state law allows town to designate scenic roads. And that's in chapter 40, section 15C. So that gives us the green light to designate scenic roads. Let's go to the next one. So let's go back. The, the scenic roads act, it allows the towns to establish these guideline, guidelines for what constitutes a scenic road. And that can be, uh, a list of, um, different things that the townspeople would say this, um, this is what we want, how we want to define or, uh, a set of guidelines that would enable the town and the townspeople to feel free to designate that road or roads to be a scenic road. So the next slide, the statute says that recommendations for, for these, this designation for scenic road comes from, uh, the town planning board, conservation commission, or the. for scenic road comes from, uh, the town, planning board, conservation commission, or the historical commission. And in this case, in two thousand and twenty-two, it's the planning board. The next slide. So what's the big deal about, why do we do what scenic roads, uh, designation? And there's a protect, there's a, uh, it provides protection for the trees, but unlike the public, uh, Shade Tree Act, which doesn't protect stone walls, the scenic road designation protects trees and stone walls. They all have to be in the public right of way. And it does not protect the trees or stone walls that are on private property. The next slide. So this goes back to some of the language that was in the previous public hearing draft article referencing Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section three, the shade trees, which states that the public shade trees shall not be cut down or removed by the by the tree warden or other person without a public hearing. A joint public hearing with the planning board is required if it's on a scenic road. So there's a, uh, uh, a higher level of, um, transparency with, uh, going just beyond a single person, uh, tree warden. It also, uh, allows the people to see the proposed, uh, action against a tree or with a tree, uh, through the planning board. And if it's a scenic road, then it would be a joint public hearing. Pretty efficient. Next slide. So what's the difference between what we have now and what we're proposing? Right now, we have, uh, chapter eighty-seven, section three, shade trees. And that, the number one hundred and seventy-five is an estimate at this point. We'll refine that with D P W. That there's around one hundred and seventy-five public ways in the town of South Row. And chapter eighty-seven protects those shade trees, uh, through its language. Under the Scenic Roads Act, chapter forty, section fifteen C, what we have right now is around a hundred and seven town public ways that are, uh, designated as scenic roads. And so they're protected under the chapter forty, section fifteen C. We're not changing any of that. All of the scenic roads we have now will not be affected in any way by this proposed warrant article. So the next slide. So we want the people to vote on that list that we had on the screen a little while ago, which lists the fifth, the sixty-eight additional roadways that were built, uh, since nineteen seventy-eight. So why, why is it, uh, since then? So in nineteen seventy-five, the town, under Article sixty-three, voted to designate ten roads in the town of South Row as scenic roads. Gilmore Road, Sears Road, Chestnut Hill Road, Lover's Lane, Pine Hill Road, Mount Vickery Road, Breakneck Hill Road, Middle Road, Oregon Road, and Edgewood. And that passed. So that was the beginning of South Row having, uh, scenic roads. The next year, in nineteen, uh, seventy-six, there was another warrant article, thirty-seven. And that voted to designate Acre Bridge Road, Bigelow Road, Deerfoot Road, sections of it, Flag Road, sections of that, High Street, Oak Hill Road, Valley Road, and Woodland Road. So that's eight more roads. So in, that was, uh, nineteen seventy-six. So we're making more roads scenic. In nineteen seventy-eight, at the town meeting, there was, um, an Article forty-one that was approved to designate all remaining town roads as scenic roads. So the list, the sixty-eight roads that this warrant article covers are the ones that were built since nineteen seventy-eight. And that's it. That's, that's the purpose of this. So warrant article is to include, those roads along with all the others, uh, as scenic roads, uh, which would enjoy the, um, cup, the, uh, protection under the Scenic Road Act as well as the, uh, Public Shade Tree Law. So, um, why did, why was there such a huge gap between nineteen seventy-eight and two thousand and twenty-two? Um, most of which, uh, time, all but three years of that time, uh, I was on the planning board. So without taking full credit for the lack of, um, action on scenic roads, my, uh, research through the, the other towns on this, it seems to be similar. It seems like, uh, a lot of the towns began to designate scenic roads in the nineteen seventies. And then, uh, really, I, I don't think I saw any more designations until the late nineties and the early two thousands, where the towns, um, I guess realized that, uh, there were more, more roads in town that would be eligible or considered or desired to be designated as a scenic road. Uh, I think in, in South Row, if you look at the list and you look at the dates, uh, when the town meeting voted to make these public ways, um, you'll see how busy the town was with subdivisions, site plans, road after road, uh, neighborhood after neighborhood was developed. And so it was possible that scenic roads was kind of on the back burner. We were so busy, uh, dealing with the subdivisions and the site plans over the years, over these years. And also probably figured that, well, if we designate this group of, of roads, there'll be another group in a couple of months, so we'll just wait. But for whatever reason, it's time to do it right. And so, uh, like some of the other towns that are designating newer roads, uh, scenic roads to add to their previous scenic road listing. Um, that's what we're, we're trying to do with this article. So if there's any other, if there's nothing else, including the dog barking, um, we will, um, open it up to the planning board. Because the dog has already spoken. Mr. Mills.
I have no questions. This looks great. I'm glad, uh, it aligns with, um, you know, what's already out there and we're not trying to create, uh, a new warrant article that, you know, encompasses everything. Uh, I like that we're tacking on to what's already been, uh, put in place. So, uh, I have no questions. Great job. Thank you, Don.
Mrs. Latrell, questions, comments?
Thank you, Don. Um, I agree. And I do, I found the list of all the roads. Um, I can send that to you. Looks like there are two hundred and twenty-three roads, thirty-five of which are private, so it's about a hundred and eighty-eight public.
Oh, I wasn't too far off.
Good guess.
Unless you're living on one of those roads. Oh, good. Thank you. What's the date of that list?
Um. Not sure. Yeah, Karen Gerogan sent it out like during this discussion time. So this, this year sometime, or the end of last year.
Yeah, I mean, town meetings, as you can see from the list, almost every, every annual town meeting included warrant articles to accept one, two, five roads because they were finished and people wanted them to be plowed and, uh, maintained by the town. So it was a pretty common occurrence through those many years. But more recently, because we haven't had that many subdivisions, there, there haven't been, uh, any road acceptance articles, uh, or at least not that many in the recent few years. So thanks, thanks, yeah. I'll, I'll revise the slides and see, see where that takes us. Anything else, Mimi?
No, other than thank you very much.
And Marnie?
Um, thank you, Don. Uh, no, I think you did a great, great job. Um, very straightforward. My, my only comment is aesthetics and it's just my, my eyes, it was really hard for me to keep looking at the screen on Zoom. So I don't know if it'll be any different. I don't know if it's just because I'm exhausted. If the green on green was a little hard, but I, I don't know if other people felt the same. I don't know what our, um, presentation will be like if it's outdoors or if it's indoors because it might be hard to see on the screen.
It's indoors. It's at Algonquin. So, um, I think earlier in this, not this hearing, but in the previous hearing, I heard something about somebody volunteering to clean up the slides.
Happy to do that.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Marnie.
That'd be great if they, uh, both had a similar, uh, layout for the planning board.
Actually, Andrew, that's a, that's a great thought. However, this article is completely, uh, well, not completely, but it's separate from the previous, uh, article because this, this is a, um, this is just adding to what we already have. And the previous article is creating something that we don't have.
I understand. I, I'm just saying if we had a similar layout as representing the planning board articles.
Oh, a planning board layout.
I can create a planning board template.
That's what I was thinking. We could brand ourselves, our own articles by having similar layouts. I think.
I'm fine with that. You go, good with that, Mimi? And Marnie?
Mm-hmm. I'm good with it.
You're gonna brand us.
I'll brand you.
It's very important to understand, um, that this just designates more roads. I hope the public, um, focuses on that. Uh, speaking of the public, any, were you all set, Marnie?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that's very clear. I think you're very clear in what that is. And I think the last slide is, this is what we're asking you to do is just an exceptional way to kind of summarize it. So I thought the, the slides were excellent.
Thank you. Anyone from the public?
I guess I'll, I'll continue to be a nuisance this, this evening.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, I, I look unmuted and I, I got a note on the screen that's, that, that said the host muted me. So anyway, um, on, there, there are two comments I have and they're on the slides, not the content of the article. The first is, uh, Marnie is absolutely right. There is insufficient contrast in that slide set to meet any accessibility guidelines. And accessibility is one of my professional hats, so please, you know, make sure that there's sufficient contrast. And the more substantive comment is it might be helpful in the slides to tie this back to the nineteen seventy-eight article because that had the intent of making every possible road in town a scenic road. And what you're doing here is you're continuing that practice, that policy by adding the roads that have been created in the interim.
So we'd create an, an additional slide that would capture that.
Or, or an additional line on one of them. Because, you know, I, I think just saying, well, there are sixty-eight more is, you know, it's, it's just saying, well, we're adding sixty-eight instead of saying, you know, we're, we're following the nineteen seventy-eight precedent and catching up. That way it doesn't sound like it's a brand new thing out of left field. It's, makes it clear from the get-go that you're continuing what the Conservation Commission started in seventy-eight.
Well, I think we'll do that, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else, Tim?
And that's it for me. Thanks, Don.
I could be wrong about this because I looked at so many websites, but I think it's the Harvard, the town of Harvard, um, shows one of their, uh, warrant article that adds, it had to be at least sixty-eight streets, um, to their list. It was recently, at a recent town meeting, might have been last October, uh, in Harvard. So this is very similar to what another town did, um, after a long gap, um, of, uh, not designating any, any scenic roads. Um, and if you're familiar with the town of Harvard, um, it's geographically much bigger than South Row, but I think they have a lot fewer roads. But they're still, if it's the right website that I'm thinking of, um, it's quite a list of roads. Similar to ours. I mean, people, people might say, wow, that's a lot of roads, but it's over many, many years. It's time to get caught up. Anybody else? If not, then we'd entertain a motion to continue this hearing to our next planning board meeting on, um, April fifteenth.
April eleven.
April eleven.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue the proposed warrant article, Scenic Roads, to April eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty-two at, uh, seven twenty-five P M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Lee Han, yes.
Excellent. We'll see you then. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is uh, the MBTA Communities Comment Letter. Um, the latest version, you have that one, Colleen?
I do.
And that was just, uh, was that just sent to us today, uh, Mimi?
Yes, it was.
And that was sent by the town planner, who, by the way, today, uh, who, by the way, is, uh, taking the day off and still working on her day off. Yep.
Yep.
So have we had a chance to read this?
So this is, if you recall from our, uh, last meeting, there, we had a draft letter in the planning board requested that I speak with the conservation agent to add some particular language around, um, the challenges of the riverfront area. So those have been added and then the, um, select board met on, um, Thursday night and reviewed this letter and they had some comments. So those comments are reflected in here. There was just, they removed, um, the last paragraph, the section five on, on costs and, they made the, they changed a little bit of the, the language to soften it up a little bit. So it's not much different from what we had before us before, with the exception of the comments that are here.
Yeah, I like the way they revised that, uh, very last paragraph, the in some paragraph. I think that's a, a good lead into, uh, town's willingness to try to comply. Any questions or comments from the planning? Any questions or comments from the planning board? Go ahead, Mimi.
One other thing, these comments are due by March thirty first. So if the planning board accepts this letter, we should go to accept it tonight, so we can be included when the select board sends it prior to March thirty first.
Okay. Again, any other questions, comments from the planning board?
None here.
And I just, I have faith in Mimi and the multiple people who've collaborated on this. I haven't had a chance to fully read it, but I read the first iteration. I think if there's slight edits and no tone is dramatically shifted. I actually like that they took out the town cost piece. And I think it, it does make a, you know, it is softer, but I also think it's a pretty impactful letter. So thank you, Mimi, for, once again, being the planning board person on this.
Do we need a motion to approve this? Is that what you're looking for?
Let's just hear if anyone from the public has anything to say. Anyone from the public? Tim, at least you could comment in the form of complimenting Mrs. Latrell.
Is, 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 is that what's called fishing for a compliment for someone else?
Well, I'm just trying to keep your streak of comments, very positive and well-received comments, going.
I, I agreed with, with the comments that were made at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and this looks like it implements those. I do think, I do agree that it isn't productive to be harsh in this sort of, of letter. It's better to be constructive. I think Mr. Healy made solid points on that at the Selectmen's meeting. And it looks like Mr. Dennington implemented that. So thanks to everyone who, who worked on it.
Thanks for your comment, Tim. So Alan, consistent, we don't want to leave you out if, if you'd like to compliment Mrs. Latrell and also learn that it's probably not a good idea to raise your hand at a planning board meeting?
Well, no, I think it's a great, it's a great idea to raise your hand at a planning board meeting. That's how you get the opportunity to, to inject some opinion. So thanks for, once again, I'm not going to hit the same streak. I think I missed making a comment at the last hearing, but I, I'll take the opportunity here. So thanks for this. Thanks for the hard work that gets put into these kinds of things. I, I will say, I don't, I guess I, I may have missed it. I don't recall seeing the version of the letter that got drafted or that got edited or whatnot. So I can't comment on the version of the text of the letter, because I, I haven't seen it. My question would be, is where could someone go to see it?
Isn't the version we just looked at on the, the right-hand side column of, doesn't, doesn't have, that have the deleted or revised text? Or text that was revised or omitted, deleted?
Yeah, it's got the track changes, if that's what you mean.
Me, meaning it would be in the packet for, that was posted for this evening's meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, should be in a packet, right?
It should be.
Okay, I'm looking now. I, I think when I joined this meeting, it's coming in on two wheels here. I just downloaded the agenda, but did not download the packet. So I will do that now and I'll take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. Original is in the previous Board of Selectmen's meeting packet.
Okay. I appreciate that direction. I'll look there as well. Thanks.
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the planning board approve the MBTA Communities' letter as presented to us with slight changes going forward, no substantive changes to the content.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yeah? Houlihan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good work and on time, or actually early. Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board. Did you have anything, Colleen, in that planner's report?
I have a project, I'm sorry, project updates, there really isn't any update on the they got the Fuston O'Neill comments back, and the applicant is working on that. After that, we have town is looking into coming back to meeting in person. And they're gonna try and keep it a hybrid with a virtual twist. The IT person is looking into that right now.
Would our April eleventh meeting make that?
Oh, I don't think so. I know.
It would be later.
Yes, definitely. They need some equipment to purchase, so that they can see the whole room if you're on Zoom. It's confusing.
An owl. Meeting owl.
Yeah. Is that what they call it, an owl?
It's called Meeting Owl. It's a software.
Thank you. Andrew Dennington has article thirty two, Rules and Regulations, that Karina wanted to call your attention to. There's a email in the Dropbox that she had put in there.
Are you trying to bring something up?
Nope, nope. I didn't have anything to bring up on that. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we can, can we move on to the minutes?
One more thing, Southborough, they're looking to share and promote the Southborough first, first centennial?
Tricentennial.
Tri, try?
Tercentennial.
Yeah, it's pronounced both ways.
So that'll be something to think about. That's coming up too. Certainly, you can go to the minutes now. Thank you.
I believe the town of Shrewsbury was also incorporated in seventeen twenty seven. So that would be an opportunity for Southborough this committee to huddle with Shrewsbury to see what they have planning. They may have some good ideas. And if I remember right, the town of Littleton turned three hundred in two thousand and fifteen. And I remember being in Littleton. Occasionally, they had parades, they had all kinds of events throughout the whole twelve months. Fireworks, skating parties, all kinds of stuff. Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
Let's go to the, the minutes, March fourteenth, meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty two meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, again?
Houlihan, yes. Nice job, Kate.
Great job, Kate, always. Okay, our next meeting, April eleventh, and then another one is on April twenty fifth. If there's nothing else, Mr. Mills? Oh, go ahead, Mimi.
Just a process question. So that MBTA Communities' letter, will the changes be accepted and that sent to the selectmen from the planning department? Or should I do that? Or how, I just don't want to, that to fall through the cracks?
How about we talk tomorrow and we'll either I and do it?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris? Yes?
Mills, yes.
Latrell, yeah?
Houlihan, yes.
We're adjourned. Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Colleen.
Thanks, Kate.
Go to bed, Marnie.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. I gotta bring up the planning board.
See you later.
Bye.